Good morning. I call the meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting to order. Will Level One please rise with a Pledge of Allegiance and invocation given by Chaplain, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, you have given us the land on this earth as a finite resource. I hope that you will guide the board, our staff, and stakeholders this morning as we make decisions on how to best manage and use this finite resource. I pray that you will help us to keep things in delicate balance, like that balance between private property rights and what is best for the community as a whole. Lord, as always, I pray for first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you will keep them safe, guide them, and comfort them each and every day. I ask for all of these things in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Mr. Moreta, change to the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Moreta, Plan and Growth Management. Um, excuse me, that's a throwback. Development Services Department, for the record. We do have a change to the agenda, found on Agenda Page Three, Item B-01, Resoning PD-18-1048. Commissioner Smith has requested this item be pulled from the consent agenda. Additionally, staff has requested the application be remanded to the May 13th, 2019 zoning hearing master meeting starting at 6:00 PM. The purpose is to clarify the intent of the comp plan consistency question that came up, and staff also wanted to note that there's not any limitations that are being requested on the remand hearing itself. So that is the status of that. Additionally, we have changes on A-1, Resoning PD-18-0996. This application is being continued to the June 11th, 2019 board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-2, Personal Appearance 19-0526. This application is being continued to June 11th, 2019 board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-3, Vacating Petition V-18-0015. The applicant is requesting a continuance to the June 11th board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-4, PD-18-1037. Staff is requesting a continuance to the May 7th meeting, board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-5, Personal Appearance 18-1236. This application is out of order, is being continued to the May 7th board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-6, Personal Appearance 19-529. This application is being continued to the May 7th board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-7, Vacating Petition 19-0006. The applicant is requesting a continuance to the June 11th board meeting, starting at 9:00 AM. Item A-8, Vacating Petition V-18-0023. Al Mariko and Kelly and Cian Sealy have withdrawn the petition to vacate. Item A-9, Major Monde 18-0559. The application has been withdrawn by the applicant, and that concludes all the changes.
Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve the changes to the agenda, seeing no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve the consent agenda, seeing no further discussion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
For those of you who have B items on the consent agenda, your items have been approved. Thank you. Anyone who intends to present testimony, evidence, or to otherwise be heard on any matter scheduled for consideration today's meeting, please stand and raise your right hand, so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
This brings us to the C items, which are hearings for vacations right away. C-1 is a first application, V-19-0012. Real Estate Department will present these items and be available for comment. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Michelle Masucci, Real Estate and Facility Services. Item C-1 today is vacate ID V-19-0012. This is a petition by Efren Melendez Jr. to vacate a portion of a platted private drain easement within Lot 5, located in the Riverwood Oaks Platte, as recorded in Platbook 96, page 28 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. The property address is 7830 Riverwood Oaks Drive in Riverview. This petition request is made for the purpose of installing a screen enclosure over an existing pool. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item C-1? Anyone wishing to address item C-1? What's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve item C-1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Item C-2 will also be presented by the Real Estate Department. This is vacating petition V-17-0018.
This is petition by Jameson Noreen McSorley to vacate a portion of a platted 10-foot-wide utility easement within Lot 1, Block B-14, located in the Platte of Ravinia Phase 2, as recorded in Platbook 121, page 35 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. The property address is 7031 Briar Hill Court in Tampa. This petition request is made for the purpose of curing an encroachment created by a developer constructed screen enclosure into the easement area. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item C-2? Anyone wishing to address item C-2? Motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve item C-2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to item E-1. This is Personal Appearance 18-1500. It's located on the south side of Loose Lake Fern, generally east of TPC Boulevard. Commissioners, this is in the development, generally known as Cheval. This deals with the equestrian area. When the plan development was first approved, it was approved with an equestrian area. However, there wasn't any structure in terms of the zoning conditions that applied to it. The applicant is coming in and proposing to make some changes on the site plan with respect to where the specific building placements are going to be, and they're addressing that through a series of conditions and limiting it to 43 horses. As part of the horses, they're also introducing conditions that deal with best management practices in order to deal with the management of the horses and also dealing with the odors that may stem from confinement of animals. Staff is recommending approval with conditions, and we're available if there are any questions.
Applicant here.
Morning, you have 15 minutes.
Morning. Yeah, thank you, Ven Marketti, for the record, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100, Tampa, representing the Tampa Equestrian Center in Lutes, Loose Lake Fern Road. David's disrupting things here, but okay. All right, so David's going to be handing out to you a couple of documents we're going to be referring to during their presentation. I think he's got there a sign-in sheet from a neighbor meeting we held. He also has a petition in support that was signed by, I think, 17 people total. We also have many people here in support of the project behind me. Let me start by saying also that, again, the center is part of Cheval. It was in Cheval since 1982, I believe, was the original date, the original zoning. With me today is Lori Kozlowski. She is the owner of the center, together with Diane Weber. I believe Diane may have been here now, but she's North Star Farm. She's the operator of the facility at the property. David Smith and Jake Kramer from my office will also be testifying. David's going to speak about land use compatibility and go through the site plan, and also Jake Kramer's going to talk about the best management practices that was just referred to by Joe. And we spent literally months on this case, probably since August of last year, it was retained, and we've spent the last six months or so on the matter. Wanted to take you through and let you know also that Cheval HOA is here. President Marilyn Healy represents Cheval HOA. We've worked collaboratively with them. We have an agreement, a private agreement. There was entered into last week, which is not obviously before you today, but the conditions of zoning essentially implement that agreement in large part. There's also provisions in that agreement which talk about enforcement and other mechanisms that either party can enforce if they need to, but it's going to be a very cooperative spirit going forward, and we're very hopeful of that. This PRS application comes before you today, again, as a cooperative measure to allow my clients to move forward with significant improvements on the facilities at the center after the county last year suspended a site development construction plan approval for that same, those same facilities basically last year. Although we strongly disagree with the county's cease of that permit, if you will, and we did file an appeal as to the administrative determination on that, that appeal is pending. We have not brought that appeal forward at this point. Instead of that, my clients wish to pursue a, you know, basically cooperative win-win solution between Cheval, HOA, the county, and my clients in their use of the property. So let me just say that the staff report is very comprehensive. It's probably, I think probably the most comprehensive I've seen, honestly, in many years, and it contains a lot of detail that this case, you know, sort of involved over the years, over the past several months. Their request is, again, to have up to 43 horses and/or ponies on the site. The improvements include new horse stalls. Right now, there aren't adequate stalls to accommodate that many horses. Also, a covered riding ring to protect the riders from the sun and other elements of weather. David's going to go through, again, the building orientation on the site. The building was actually approved in a different orientation than what we agreed to finally, and to relocate that has been a substantial cost that my clients are going to incur along with Cheval, again, together. So also Jake is going to talk about the best management practices in detail. He's worked extensively with University of Florida, and I've also worked, obviously, with Cheval as well in that regard. Let me have Lori first speak, and then Diane's going to go next.
Good morning, Commissioner, staff. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Lori Kozlowski, and this is my husband, Mike Kozlowski. We own Tampa Equestrian, which resides on the Cheval Equestrian Center. Mike and I are founder and co-founder of Health Insurance Innovations, which is a Tampa-based company that we started in 2008 and took public on the NASDAQ in 2013, adding continuous employment revenue to the Hillsborough County through the present day, and recently top number one on Forbes and number one growth stock on the NASDAQ. I mention this because this is a part of our story. During the time we were building this, our company, I was serving as chief compliance officer for our company and traveling all over the country, speaking in states' respective insurance commissioners. Our two daughters were riding with Diane in Wesley Chapel at another farm in the heart of Wesley Chapel, which was over an hour from their school. We did so because of Diane's solid reputation as a human being and a trainer. Diane and I started off as trainer and horse show mom relationship. Fast forward to today, it's a partner, partnership, friendship, and now family. A family that I treasure each and every day of my life, and I wouldn't trust my children with anyone else. I received a call from Diane letting me know that the land she was leasing from was being sold, which I secretly was happy because it was so far away, and that she would have to find another stable by the end of the year. She also asked if we could have lunch, which I replied, "This lunch sounds expensive." And it was. She knew I was struggling, caring for our five children, building our company, traveling all over the country for work, and racing them out to Wesley Chapel for riding lessons because they're obsessed with their horses and ponies. She said, "Well, I found out that Cheval Equestrian Center is up for sale. Are you interested?" Cheval is 10 minutes from my house and 25 minutes from their school. So all I had to do was to convince Mike, which was not an easy task. The decision to purchase Cheval Equestrian Center at first was for convenience for a working mom who barely got to see her children, and now it has evolved into something much more substantial for me and my children's upbringing. Our young riders are not gaming all day, getting into trouble with alcohol, drugs, boys, girls. The older riders are established professionals. These girls are straight A students but aren't afraid to get dirt under their nails or between their toes. They have learned bravery, confidence, responsibility, respect, discipline, hard work, follow-through, and humility, all through Diane's safety-first, no-nonsense approach. The Equestrian Center was far from move-in ready. It was in deplorable conditions. Me, Diane, my sister Chrissy, and Andy, our handyman, gutted the place inside and bringing it up to high-quality standards. I have the inspection report to show you if you are interested. I promised Diane that we would build this out together, that we would give her an opportunity to do what me and Mike did with our company, to give somebody a chance to be an entrepreneur and to build revenue and more jobs into this community. So after two years of a very long permitting process, I finally had the permit in hand and approved by the county to begin the project. $300,000, we spent on a purchased building, hundreds of thousands of dollars in employees and the equipment, and the site prepping on land was currently underway, and it was all stopped without any warning or communication. That was devastating and exhausting, and that is why we are here today.
No, I just wanted to add that we appreciate everyone's time today.
Step to the mic, sir.
I just wanted to thank everyone for their time today, and what we're excited most about is keeping this green area. We could, you know, be here today talking about assisted living apartments. It's a great location right by the veterans. We're doing this as a labor of love. For us to turn this into a Churchill Downs nice, you know, area, it's a 30-year payback. So this isn't something that you're doing to make money on. This is something that you're doing for your children and to keep the land green, and we got very fortunate late in life that we're okay financially to be able to do something like this, not only for us but for the community. So we want, we want our neighbors to be happy. We want our children to be safe, for them to be happy, and to keep this green and have a beautiful piece of property in the Tampa area. Mike Kozlowski.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ven Marketti again for the record. David Smith's going to go through some of the zoning part of this and the site plan. We're going to hand out a series of documents in that regard.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2100, Sterns Weaver Miller, Director of Zoning and Development for Sterns Weaver Miller. I'll go through this quickly since time is short. What's with for you, the package I provided is all the backup essentially that's in your backup from staff. Up above on the Elmo is the existing site plan in the CU, and below is the new proposed site plan. Essentially, there aren't a whole lot of changes, other than where the previous riding ring was located existing. It was going to be a covered riding ring and additional stables. As part of this process, as indicated by Mr. Marketti, we worked extensively with the Cheval HOA to develop a site plan, and there's a more detailed site plan in your packet, to essentially provide for upwards of 60 foot of setback from the southern property line for this building. This sketch actually shows it at about 40, so it'd be 20 foot further north. These are the existing facilities. This pond was already constructed, but we're going to relocate it further north at the request of the HOA. We're providing extensive landscaping in cooperation with Cheval along the southern property line. We've also located, what will be discussed on BMPs, is the waste management facility, which is dealing for horses in excess of 25, and it's very important for protection of the community to have those best management practices, and we'll have those discussed. They've been approved and provided by the State of, University of Florida. This is an elevation showing the facility. You can see where the Churchill Downs, you know, was alluded to. It shows all the elevations. It was requested that we flip the building so that south elevation would be facing Cheval. Last in your package is a rendering, which I love artists. They always put a lot of color in it, but it gives you an idea of the orientation of the building, what the riding facility is in relationship to the community. This is the backside facing the south. But I think, rather than going through each one of these, I think what the important part is, is that there was an equestrian facility always planned to be here. It was actually there first, and it's continued to operate and is going to be operated under best management practices, which Mr. Kramer can discuss right now, to ensure that the community will not have any odors or issues relative to the additional horses or manure. I'll answer any questions at the end.
Commissioners, good morning. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, Number 2100. I primarily worked on the best management practices of this project. I have a background in agriculture. The best management practices are essentially a set of practices specific to each type of agriculture, in this case to equine and equestrian operations. And you'll see in your backup, it's about a 200, 250-page manual. Those practices are developed by a process managed by the Florida Department of Agriculture, and what they do is they bring in a consortium of the best scientists in the state and sometimes from around the country to develop practices that if a facility can demonstrate and become certified that they're meeting these, then that presumptively means they're meeting all of the state water quality standards and all of the state pollution control standards. So what we did is, our first step is we got the current facility as it exists today. We worked with the Department of Agriculture and made sure that they were, they did receive certification under that best management practice process. The state agent spent about a day out at the site, looking at all of the practices for how do you manage waste, how do you control odors, how do you control insects, flies, those sorts of things. Then the second thing that we did was, because the facility's looking to expand the number of horses, we worked with the Department of Agriculture as well as the gold standard in Florida. I'm a Knoll, but the gold standard in Florida for agriculture is the University of Florida. We worked with Dr. Sandra Tinbrook, who is the state expert in equestrian operations. We put on her boots, we spent a day out at the site, and she helped us. She actually, because of her position with the University of Florida, is an independent expert on behalf of taxpayers. She could not work for either side, but she said she would sit down with us and the HOA and anyone who wanted to listen. She helped us develop our waste management plan and the best management practices going forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ven Marketti, for the record. Again, we agree to all staff recommended conditions. We've worked with Cheval on those conditions as well collaboratively, and we hope for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any proponents that wants to testify? You have, good morning, you have 15 minutes.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Marilyn Healy, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 1700, representing the Cheval East Property Owners Association. Consists of over 500 homes and probably about 1,500 residents. Last week, the association board unanimously voted to support this rezoning with the specific conditions set forth in the staff report. Since the late 1980s, Cheval has been a secure residential premier community with a golf course and an equestrian center amenity package. They aggressively fight to make sure that their interests are protected and that community is protected. For the past several years, the board's been addressing different issues with the Equestrian Center in terms of maintenance, what's going on, and, most recently, the removal of our security wall at no fault of the Equestrian Center. So as you can well imagine, this relationship can be a little rocky, and you've heard what happened to the applicant. It was equally as astounding to us when we saw that something had got approved that we had no notice of. So what happens there, right? Because Cheval really wants a first-class equestrian center. The Kozlawskis love their horses. So knowing all of that, we came together and we first dealt with a lot of misinformation, a lot of misunderstandings early on from opponents who didn't even want an equestrian center there. Well, that's not the case. The property owners want an equestrian center there, and we want a first-class equestrian center. Even more problematic is the fact that the current county regulations and somewhat the state regulations are more attuned to like a farm operation, not an equestrian center sitting right next to a residential development, actually part of our development, and the other residential developments surrounding it. So it took some work and a lot of education on the board's part, and I think somewhat on the Equestrian Center's part, to try to figure out a way that we could coexist together and come up with the same result, because I believe we all want that. We've come a long, long way in that endeavor. Out of, gosh, I think 7,000 people, give or take, when you take all the other homeowners' associations near us in Cheval, we've got four homes that are still very concerned about this. They live across the street from the Equestrian Center boundary. Their primary concerns, at least that they've expressed to us, are the number of horses, the location of that emergency gate, because it's across the street of one of them, they really don't want to look at it, and one of the residents, I think, may have asthma, and they're fearful that this would aggravate that. The remaining 14 homes on that boundary are all in support of this. The board did not take its responsibility lightly. We've engaged equestrian at Kaiser University and the University of Florida to help the board understand and evaluate what it means when you have 25 horses. They are much less 43, because we're not equestrian experts. I can now tell you, those beautiful horses have a lot of manure, and with our education on that, there are ways that you can manage that effectively. It's not the number of horses, it's how it's maintained and operated. And when you get to a certain level under state law, they have to do other things, and with all of that and working with them, we asked them to move the buildings back and reorient them because of the noise, the sound, the dust, the lights intruding in on the neighborhoods. They've agreed to put extra landscaping. We're also putting extra landscaping in. They've agreed to have the, in addition, all the protocols and some upgraded ones. They've agreed to allow the emergency access to the extent that the county can permit it and the fire inspector is okay, to have it the same split rail fence. What we can't do, because it's not in our power, either one of us, is to tell the fire inspector what he or she has to have in terms of emergency access. That access has to be there or in some general area close to there. Let's see. We've also got, finally, last night, letters from our sister associations, Fern Glen, Heritage Harbor, and Cheval West, who had originally filed objections because they were in the same place we were, and they are now supporting this. And Sam, if you will give that, I'll go ahead and submit those to the record. So we're here to answer any questions. It's been a long haul, and at least from our side, we're sorry we can't make all of our residents happy, but we've really tried. our residents happy, but we've really tried in this manure management aspect of this, and the quality of this development that's being proposed is huge for us. If you do nothing, we're still faced with county regulations that don't regulate that to the level that we need to have against our communities. So respectfully, we ask that you approve this application, and we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other proponents wishing to testify this morning?
My name is Darla Colano. I'm a homeowner neighboring Tampa Equestrian Center. The concerns I am going to share reflect the feelings of all four property owners residing at 4614, 4616, 4618, and 4620 Avenue Longchamp's.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, God.
I said proponents.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kate O'Hara, and I'm very honored to be here today to talk with you about my support for North Star Farm. So a quick bit of context, I actually grew up in Tampa, and I was one of those crazy pony girls begging their mom as early as they can remember for horseback riding lessons. So I've been on every end of the spectrum. I've taken lessons, I've leased horses, and I now own a horse that's been boarded at North Star Farm for about a year. So all of that to say, I've been at a lot of barns, and I can honestly say, I've never been in a barn at North Star Farm. The quality is unparalleled, and having a facility like this, so close, like Lori mentioned, to so much of the Tampa community really is an asset. So what about this barn makes it special? One thing is the maintenance and the care for the facility. It's unrivaled. You saw the pictures. The place is gorgeous, and those are not just pictures. It wasn't just cleaned up for the pictures. It looks like that every day. Diane, her staff, everyone that's there is really committed to the farm. I have never been to a farm that has so few flies and pests. The manure is well taken care of. You don't see it. The horses are clean daily. Another factor for me, I travel, so I'm gone four days a week. I actually moved my schedule around to be here today, because I'm so committed to this farm. My horse is impeccably taken care of when I've gone. It's not always been that way. I trust them, and I know that she's well taken care of. And lastly, like Lori mentioned, the quality of the instruction is incredible. Diane knows her stuff. She's focused on safety. She's focused on the fundamentals. So whether you're an owner like me, or you're someone who's taking lessons just because you want to be there, you're getting the same level of quality and service. Like Mike mentioned, the area is changing. I live in Lutes. My dad lives in Lutes. I grew up there. The farm that I used to ride at as a child, Showcase Farms, is no longer there. It's now townhouses. I don't want to see that continue to happen. We need to have these types of assets in the community for our children, for ourselves. So my last point is that this really, it's not just an investment in me. I want to see this expansion happen. I love the facility. But more than anything, this is an investment in our community and in our future. We need to have this green space. We need to have this access. We all spend so much time staring at screens. I've got a blue light filter in my glasses so that my eyes don't get tired. But when I go to the barn, I completely feel relaxed. It's a place that I can connect with nature, be away from work, be away from stress. And I want that for myself, for my children someday, and really for our community moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Before anyone else, are you all proponents? Okay. Proponents and opponents, remember when you come forth, you need to give your name, you don't need to give your address. And remember, the proponents right now have six minutes and twenty-five seconds left. So is there any other proponents? Yes, ma'am, come on.
Hello, my name is Malin Mack, and I live in Cheval. I have been there for eighteen years. And when we were looking for a community to buy into, I was looking for a golf and also an equestrian community that was in my husband and I's both interests. We looked all over the state of Florida, and in Wellington, and Tampa in particular, and in Ocala. We settled on this area because it was most convenient for my husband. But I do know that the equestrian center and the polo club, it was Cheval Equestrian and Polo Club, and we have had lots of, equestrian center has been very active since we've been there. It has changed ownerships. We've watched it grow, and we've also watched it stagnate. And when we bought in there, it was, there was no building, no development. Wellington has embraced the area, and that has been one of the top horse areas in the country. And it was a sister area with Cheval in the polo aspect. Cheval is named after a horse, and I was moving forward with wanting to work on my own personal equestrian dreams. I have had two girls, and I've been to several farms in the area. We moved into Cheval not knowing we were going to have children, but it was of my personal interest, and having children has put me in the situation where we can have both of them ride competitively and horse show. And we compete all over the nation, most specifically up and down the east coast. And most of our girls are registered in the United States Equestrian Federation, which is a notable, top-of-the-line board that you, our girls operate under. Our horses are under the care of a trainer, which puts our girls and the horses in that top competitive position. We are a part of the lettering program, as well as many of the girls are, in our barn, and they go to the school right across the street. So that's also noted in our school system. The home prices in Wellington have soared, and it only brings asset and betterment for the community to have top horse equestrian facilities in your area. It brings with it, it brings people that want to improve, the area improves with that. I feel like my girls are safe when they go there. They are amongst people. We're all like a family. The horses are well taken care of. And I would, a covered arena, which is, the Kozlowski's are putting their private money into building this grand facility, and it just would improve the area of where we live and to keep our girls as competitive as we can in the sport, which we all love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name is Pam Yerzician. I'm a nurse, and I work for a biotech pharmacy, pharmaceutical company that makes cancer medications. I'm here because I have a lifelong passion about horses. And five years ago, I was transferred to Florida from New Jersey, excuse me, and I did my due diligence in the area and could not find a barn really that met my standards. And I walked into North Star Farm, which was at another location at the time, and immediately realized that this is where I wanted to be. It, as my husband said when he landed and saw it, he said, "It's cleaner than the corporate housing that we're living in." And it stays that way. It really does. It stays that way every single day. Now, I brought two horses down with me. They landed here, worked, and Diane worked with them, and it was like the Wizard of Oz, where they clean them all up, and, you know, New Jersey, the facility that we were at was not even close to where they are now, what North Star is. So they, again, were like the Wizard of Oz, and all scrubbed up and taken care of, and it is paradise, not only for horseback riders, but the horses. And Diane, in this industry, if you've known it, there's not an area, there's not very many people with integrity. And that is the most beautiful thing about this farm and the people that are involved. They all have integrity. And they're the ones telling me that your horse is a little off, we're going to get the blacksmith in or the vet in. That has never happened anywhere else before. And I've paid hundreds of dollars for previous boarding facilities. This place cares about its horses and its riders. And it just, for me, to find this place, and in my, I don't want to say my aging years, but my aging years, while I'm close to not yet retirement, I can foresee myself riding into retirement because of this barn, because of these people. And I don't live in Lutes, but I'll tell you, I am certain that it's going to be a beautiful place. It already is. The expansion is going to be even more magnificent. And these people, they real, we all want it. We all, and I think it's going to do good things for the community, and certainly for these people and for all of us involved. It's a place where dreams come true, for those of us who love horses. So thank you.
Next, you have thirty seconds.
Okay. I'm Greg Montana. I'm a Cheval resident. In a nutshell, the agreement that was reached doesn't please everybody, but out of five hundred homes, there are very few that are not on board with this. This will be an asset to home values within Cheval. We can co-promote, and it'll be good for the equestrian center to have the backing of the vast majority of homeowners in a community. I don't have a horse. I don't intend on having a horse, but I care about my property values, and I think this is going to help.
Sir, you have two seconds.
Michael Stewart, 1520 South Sherman Forest Drive. I'm in support of this, and I've never talked for less than ten seconds. Support it.
Opponents, you have fifteen minutes. Be considerate of those that are behind you.
I will.
And then let me explain to you, the clock that's in front of you, the timer.
Okay.
When that hits yellow, you have thirty seconds left.
Okay. Thank you, and I apologize.
All I needed was your name.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Darla Colano. I'm a homeowner neighboring Tampa Equestrian Center. The concerns I'm going to share reflect the feelings of all four property owners that are directly in front of the proposed expansion. These residents are all present this morning, and all homeowners directly across from the proposed expansion of the Tampa Equestrian Center in Lutes. We are all united with our concerns. I'm here this morning to oppose the current expansion proposal plan submitted to the county for approval from the Tampa Equestrian Center, and also suggest a solution that I believe will satisfy property owners closest to the expansion, as well as the owners of the equestrian center. We believe the placement of the additional stables within such close proximity to our homes will have negative health effects for our families. We also oppose the location of the proposed emergency exit that will be located in the middle of our residential street. It is undesirable to, as it encroaches onto Cheval property, and will harm curb appeal for all homes on our street. We do not have a solution to these concerns, I'm sorry, we do have a solution to these concerns, and feel our concerns are warranted. All property owners directly in front of the proposed stables prefer the original position of the expansion, submitted to the county the summer of 2008, which puts the stables furthest away from our homes, as well as includes no emergency exit right in the middle of our street. The original proposed orientation of the arena and stables Tampa Equestrian Center presented to the county last summer would be a more acceptable solution. I am certain the original plans could be identified today by the homeowners, and I did bring one copy that's on the board right there. And it shows that the stable portion of the expansion is not so concentrated right on our residential street. It goes more north and south, not east and west. We are asking the county to please consider our concerns, and if exceptions are to be made, please consider placement of these additional stables farthest away from the residents for health purposes. The equestrian center's original plan is considered a more desirable plan by each and every property owner that lives directly in front of the new expansion. We purchased our homes next to an equestrian center, expecting to see horses riding. With the plans that are being submitted today, we will never see horses riding again, and we will be looking at the back of a stable. Having a view into the arena is what we prefer and is what makes living on our street so charming. Imagine, if you will, you're in the market for an oceanfront property. You begin your search by telling your realtor you want a property near the beach, but you don't want to see the ocean. You prefer a parking garage view. That's absurd, right? We feel the same way, living next to an equestrian center. Why wouldn't we want to see the parading and jumping of beautiful horses during the day out our windows? We find the charm of living next to an equestrian center where we can see people riding horses. We would like to see into the arena. It's what the equestrian center originally wanted, and it's what every property owner directly in front of the proposed structure wants. They are all present today, and you can ask them directly. If rotating the arena back to its original position is not an option, we kindly ask Hillsborough County Fire Marshal to please consider an alternative location for the emergency exit. By relocating the emergency exit to the other side of the proposed structure closer to the end of our street would mitigate negative curb appeal to the front of our homes. We want a satisfactory outcome for all and believe placement of additional stables furthest away from our homes, and relocating the emergency exit will appease not only the residents closest to the expansion, but also the equestrian center owners. Respectfully, I ask you, the county commissioners of Hillsborough County, to ask the owners of the equestrian center their preference to the positioning of the expansion. We have worked a lifetime to afford our homes, and we want to continue to live happily in our beautiful community. Thank you for your time. We appreciate anything you can be done to make everyone happy with the decisions made that affect Cheval, as well as our neighbors, the Tampa Equestrian Center.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you for your time. My name is Irina Lukasik. I'm at 4614 Avenue Longchamps, directly across from the expansion. I am basically here to express my opposition to the expansion of the additional horses in excess of the county code of twenty-three horses to remain at a cap. The original plan submitted on 12/15, which was originally submitted by Darla, would better suit the homes on Avenue Longchamps, by avoiding to add in the additional emergency exit, which actually would be placed between my home and Darla's home. We would prefer that the original plan that was initially stated be turned, and the emergency exit, as well as the additional fire hydrant that needs to be placed, would be placed back at Lutes Lake Fern, which would be the preference for those four of us remaining homes that are in opposition of this, to have it go that way. Finally, I would hope that the other addressed item here is the security wall, which has been down since August 7th. As a homeowner, we have been paying our HOA fees for living in a secure gated community. This has not happened since that day. We have had other violations of individuals crossing through that property, as well as students and whatnot causing some havoc that we've had to endure because this wall being down. We would hope that the county would also incite that this wall be instituted as a first placement before any other construction does take place. I appreciate your time and effort for this and that to address all the items here in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Ernest Delatorre. I live at 4618 Avenue Longchamps. I've been in Cheval since November 2000. Our home is located right across the street of this expansion. We're concerned about the location of the stables and how it will affect my wife's health. My wife has asthma, and for its best interest for us, we need to move the, it's in the wrong location. I love my, I love horses. First pony, I had a pony when I was five years old. My grandfather owned a ranch with a hundred and twenty-five horses, and fifty thousand head of cattle. In 1961, we lost everything to Fidel Castro's regime. So I understand the value of rights of private ownership. Commissioners, I ask for your vote against rezoning the line forty-three horses, just enforce the county code for twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I am Mary Delatorre, and I live at 4618 Avenue Longchamps in Lutes. Excuse me, my asthma's acting up. My property is directly across from the proposed expansion. I am here today to express my concern as a resident in such close area to the proposed stables that will be placed right in front of my home. My primary concern is health issues, as I have asthma, which could be life-threatening. And as you can see up there, our homes are located. Our home is located under E. No, G, right there, and that's where the expansion is going to be. Derek and Darla is right next door to us, and Ms. Montsor is on the other side. She's in the audience right now. As I was stating, my primary concern is health issues related, as I have asthma, which could be life-threatening. I have a letter from my physician, if you would like confirmation, and this was presented to our board in January. The additional horses and the location of the stables are the main issues. We just want the code to enforce the maximum number of horses that is allowed. We just want the code to enforce the maximum number of horses that is allowed per county code 6.1192. I will be disappointed if any agreement is reached that compromises on this code. In the past, some of our neighbors had issue with manure management when there were only three horses. We can live with the occasional noise during tournaments, but not the stench and the health hazards close to the home. Please consider our concerns, we have been there for 19 years. I know one of our board members, Greg Quetana, just mentioned that 500 of the homes have approved this, but actually, the board has not submitted anything to our community regarding this. We've been in the dark. Going back, please consider our concerns, we've been here for 19 years, we've enjoyed living across the street from the Equestrian Center. Let's work together to make sure all the residents who call Avenue Longchamp's home are not negatively affected by such an expansion. Let me be clear, we respect the owners' wishes to build an arena for the protection of the riders, having melanoma myself. We understand compromise regarding the location have to be done, but surely not when it comes to issuing, like our well-being. I hope and pray that the county commissioner enforce the current land development code regulation for public stable. This site already has a stable to handle the 23 horses allowed per county code 6.1192. Please remember, this is a residential development, and our four homes across the street are being affected, four out of the eight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents?
Do you need my letter from my doctor?
If you want to give it to us, ma'am, just hand it to the clerk over there. Are there any other opponents? Any other opponents? Applicant rebuttal. Have five minutes.
Hi, good morning. My name is Diane Weber, I own and operate North Star Farm at the Kozlowski's Tampa Equestrian Center. I just wanted to speak a little bit about our operations in the barn. Mrs. Delatorre was present at a community meeting we had, and I showed her around the barn, and I explained to her that our stables are impeccably cleaned. We clean the barns three times a day. We don't store sawdust or hay in the barn, we store that in an outbuilding on the other side of the property. There are no cobwebs present, there's barely any dust, and she spent about an hour in the barn and didn't seem to have any problems with asthma. So I just wanted to let you know, our methods are extreme, we are extremely clean and not dusty, and again, we don't even store hay or shavings in our stables, so I just wanted to let everyone know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vemorketti again for the record. I put in the overhead there, illustration of what the, where the facility would look like as compared to Longchamps. That's from a 45-foot setback, we've actually agreed now to 60-foot setback with the HOA for Cheval, so we're moving it further away from, if you will, the residents along that roadway. The placement, you know, obviously our clients, you know, last year would have liked to have the placement the way it was, and move ahead with the project, but given the fact we have an agreement with the Cheval HOA, we're not at this point, you know, able to modify the placement of the facility. We think the placement, including the height of the facility, if you look at, the height is much less than what it would be otherwise if it were turned and rotated to face north-south, basically. So we think that that's a very nice compromise. Also, I should mention, the Cheval HOA is going to install additional landscaping, which is part of your backup, along that southern boundary line, and that will also help with any screening, if you will, from the facility to the residences to the south. The emergency access gate was mentioned earlier. That location was selected by the engineers to be most accessible, if you will, to the building, in the event of an emergency. Again, it's not gonna be utilized except for an emergency, hopefully none will ever happen, but we have to have that access because when the building was relocated, it had been off of Lutes Lake Fern Road, now it can't be that way, so we had to relocate that emergency access entrance. To the extent that, you know, you need to look at moving it further to the west, our concern is that the neighbors had seen the site plan, all the neighbors presumably, and showed the location of the access, emergency access where it is currently, it's gonna be a white picket, white fence, same as it is now, not gonna be red, and that was one of the concerns. So we think that that should be fine. Again, there's gonna be more landscaping there as well, obviously outside the perimeter of that area, but I wanted to mention that. We did have the neighborhood meeting, Darla came, as well as the second speaker, and also the, Mary and Ernest were not there, Mary was there. As was just mentioned by Diane, she showed Mary around the facility, Mary came out and said, "It looks very clean here," and of course Jake mentioned the best management practices, which are very significant. The clients are running a first-class operation, they intend to run a better first-class operation in the future with all these additional facilities and other operating standards in place. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you, whether you're pro-opponent or opponent, for coming out to speak on this issue this morning. We appreciate your concerns. Now moving to board discussion. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to echo Commissioner Miller's remarks, I want to thank everyone for coming down and either sharing your support or concern with the project. I also want to thank the applicant and the association for working together to address most of the neighbors' concerns. As the old-timer here, I can tell you that the Cheval Association is not shy about commenting and addressing any issues or concerns with their community. The fact that the association is here supporting this application speaks volumes. Again, when you've been around as long as I have, you think you've seen it all, but this is the first time I've seen a manure management plan.[1023.25][1023.25](laughter) I don't know if it'll be the last or not, but that's certainly a first. But seriously, as a result of working with the, with the community, there are significant conditions, best management practices, mitigation measures to minimize the impacts to the community. In the backup, you'll notice there's no objections from our transportation staff, planning commissions found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff recommended approval. We were given letters of support from the other neighborhood communities, the Cheval West, CDD, Harbor, Heritage Harbor, and Fern Glen. There are absolutely beautiful renderings and illustrations in our backup, so I am gonna move approval, but I do understand the issues regarding the emergency exit, so Adam, is it possible to add any flexibility with this, or can we add any language that potentially provides relief to those four homeowners that have concerns with respect to the emergency exit?
Yes, Commissioners, there's the, this emergency access is something that the Fire Marshal Office required to support the development. We can add language into the board, the board was so inclined to add language to condition seven to reflect that that, the location of that emergency access point may be moved subject to the approval and agreement of the Fire Marshal's office, and that would be something that would be looked at potentially as part of our, the site development process for this project.
I'm inclined to add that, but I would like to know the, the, had the applicant comment on that?
Vemorketti, we're fine with that language. I think move as further west as possible, is that the intent?
The intent is to provide flexibility in the location, as long as it meets the requirements and the access that's required by the Fire Marshal.
Right, we're fine with that.
Okay, so I'm gonna move approval with that additional condition.
Motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, thank you everyone for coming out. As one that actually managed a barn for the park police going through college, I recognize that it is a challenge of managing a horse facility where there are a lot of people around. But best practices that are written in here appear to be at top of the line that I can see, even though it's been a long time since I've been around a lot of horses. I do recognize the fire issue as far as their concerns there, that if, in fact, the Fire Marshal is looking to connect to the existing residential fire lines, and that seemed to be the reasoning they made that decision, versus having it access on Lutes Lake Fern where there may not be, you know, that may be the issue, and if there's language to have them consider that, that would seem to make sense. I'm excited to see that in a horse community that was designed to be a horse community, that there's so much effort creating a stellar facility to address the concerns of the neighborhood, as well as to serve the community of which was designed and, you know, based on enjoying horses as part of people's lives. So I will support this effort, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you again, I'd like to thank also everyone for coming out, and I think it sounds like a really stellar effort to try to work out the issues in this regard with this. I just am curious about the, also about the emergency gate, so is the issue that the access, or it sounds like the issue is the appearance, and then I just wondered if the appearance, if it's required, whatever it, the appearance is, you know, that's, that's what it sounded like to me.
Commissioner, the emergency gate right now is conditioned to be of the same construction and same material as the existing fence, again, subject to approval of the Fire Marshal that meets the functionality, but it's conditioned to, to match that appearance of the fence. My understanding was that the speaker was speaking to the actual location of the access, of the emergency access.
So to someone looking at it, they wouldn't even necessarily be able to tell that that was the emergency opening?
Correct, that's the intent of the...
I was just curious about that. The other question, my perennial question, and I noted it, it sounds like a lot of issues occurred here, and I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'm not sure of your name with the HOA, you just stood?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to ask just a question, because this is an issue that has come before us so many times, and I'm, it sounds like the issue with this was that initially, the community didn't feel like they had notice.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, how, how did that happen? Because I would imagine you would have had to have signs on the property and other, and it sounds like this caused a lot of problem, I just would like to know because we have repeatedly had this issue.
I'm gonna let your legal department talk to you about the position of that. Suffice it to say that an interpretation was made that it was an allowed development under the current site plan, which obviously we disagreed with, and then I think county staff did too. And you guys are dealing with this every day, it's very hard to make everybody happy, and when you have residents who love their homes, they love their neighbors, and they don't want things to not be that way. Obviously, I really believe, after working with the applicant, they love their horses. This is an Equestrian Center. So it's not perfect, but I really think that we've got it in a position, because we have a very active board, there were no, no disingenuous things here, we just couldn't make those four residents happy. There's 18 of them there on the strip, so that, you know, in my world at least, from association, pretty good. As far as notice goes, I think the way the county has things set up now, you have to notify the property owners associations and other things, you do the best you can, and then you'll still have people that say they didn't get it, or they didn't understand. It's not easy, but we appreciate it.
I appreciate that, I just wanted to delve into that a little bit, it sounds like we've had lots of ample testimony with regards to the, what's being done and building this and everything, but I was just concerned because it just seems like maybe some of this could have been avoided from the start and in the process, you know, some of the pain that was here, and so I just wanted to, that, just to comment on the notice.
Before we move forth to get into your question concerning notice, I'm gonna ask Mr. McCormick to please comment on that.
I just, I wanted to clarify, I believe with the notice issue, and Ms. Haley can correct me if I'm, if I misstate this, I believe she's talking about notice or notification of the site development plan approval and the interpretation that was made regarding the design of the Equestrian facility, as opposed to notice for this hearing or some public hearing process.
That's correct.
Well, no, no, that's what I would have thought, actually, which is exactly what you're saying, so it, so it's just that, again, you felt, or the community felt like they should have had notice of the site approval, and so I just, I understand what you're saying now, and I'm glad to have it clarified, but...
And this somewhat is a little different, because normally, your PDs have a bunch of conditions and all that, and Cheval does everywhere else but this Equestrian centerpiece. So it was an unusual situation at best, and fortunately, because of the board and because of the applicant, I think we're gonna have a quality development here, and hopefully some of the concerns that the other couple folks are worried about, they'll see when it gets up and operating that it won't be an issue for them. At least that's our hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've just, I appreciate the amount of work that's been done here, it looks pretty extraordinary, and like there was a lot of effort put in to make for a good proposal, or a good, or a good site plan, and I'm pleased to hear that the, to the extent that the emergency gate's an issue, that it can be still considered or reconsidered.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very briefly, again, thank you to all the residents, know several of you, and my husband was in the horse business for many, many years until they changed the tax laws back in the 80s, and then it wasn't so lucrative, but I'm just so happy to see this project. It's, you know, we're developing ourselves as a destination community, and this is unique for that, for the area of North County and Northwest County, having horse farms, and I just think it, it lends to the area and the development of that area, and to be known for horses and equestrian in that community, and it's a small business, I do applaud both of you as owners for making the investment and being successful. So I think it's a great project, was very, very proud to support it, and look forward to visiting it.
I'm sorry, Commissioners, if I just make one clarification on the moving of the emergency access, wanted to clarify that the, the emergency access would move only to the, to the west, the applicant's representative advises that moving it to the east would cause potentially some additional conflicts with, with some of the existing houses, so the flexibility for the access point as it exists now to move would be to move to the west only, as opposed to the east.
Commissioner Hagan, is that part of your motion? Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Murman, to approve item E1, seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Moretta.
This brings us to item E2, CDD 19-0452, this is a petition to merge Fishhawk Community Development.
If you all could clear the room as quietly as possible, we have to continue our meeting.[1730.01][1730.01](pause) I guess that made no difference, did it?[1734.11][1734.11](laughter) I don't want to do that, I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. Mr. Moretta.
Item E2 is a petition to merge CDDs, Mr. Brian Grady will make a brief presentation and be available for questions.
Speak loud.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services, a petition...
Excuse me, excuse me, could you please exit as quietly as possible, we still have to continue our meeting? Okay.
CDD application 19-0452 is a petition to establish the Fishhawk Ranch Community Development District. The petition has been submitted by the Fishhawk CDD, the Fishhawk II CDD, and the Fishhawk III CDD, requesting to merge three CDDs and to establish from the merged district, the Fishhawk Ranch Community Development District. The Prow's Community Development District would encompass approximately 2,500 square acres, generally located east of Bellshells Road and west of Lithia Pinecrest Road, and the north and south side of Fishhawk Ranch Boulevard. No objections to Prow's CDD were raised by reviewing agencies. Staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 190... Staff finds the application meets the requirements of Chapter 194 established statutes to establish a community development district and recommends approval. Available for questions. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, it's a public hearing, public hearing. There's a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item E2, whether they are proponent or opponent. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Good morning, Board. My name is Biff Crane with the law firm Pettit-Warrell at 100 North Tampa, Suite 3575. For the boards, I am here primarily just to answer any questions that you may have. Very seldom do you see a process that's been as invigorating as this has been, this process was undertaken by the boards, starting in, back in 19, excuse me, not 19, 2016. And they have moved forward deliberately, making sure that everything was fixed the way they wanted it. They have a merger agreement that it was entered into by the three boards and the three boards took the unusual position of voting themselves out of existence for the betterment of the community. So we look forward to your approval of this. We look forward to the administrative benefit of having one district governing the entire area. We look administrative savings on the neighborhood of a quarter million dollars for that that will be passed on to the residents in the form of lower or not raised in the future taxes on their operation and maintenance portion of the debt. All the bond debt still remains where it was, where it is, and will continue to impact and be taken from those areas of the district without any effect. Would you go ahead to answer any questions?
I see no questions, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item G1, rezoning PD 18-1153. I will note that oral arguments been filed for this application. If you want to move for that now or do you want me to proceed?
Need a motion for oral argument. We have motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. Moretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This parcel is a 1.69 acre parcel located at 1208 North Parsons Avenue, which is just north of Martin Luther King Boulevard on Parsons on the east side. Commissioners, this current zoning for this parcel is RDC 12, which permits duplex zoning at 12 units an acre. It is constrained by the comp plan, which is RES4. And the starting point for this is the current zoning was in 2006. The current zoning, the applicant at that time sought a flex. A flex allows the comprehensive plan, which is adjacent to the site, to be flexed across that site 500 feet if approved by the board. It's a special process that the applicant availed themselves to, which is rooted in the plan back in 2006. Since 2006, the Sefner Mango Plan, Community Plan was approved. That planning area does not allow the flex provision to be applied in that area. And that's really what the crux of the issue is behind the recommendations. The applicant has prepared a planned development zoning. The applicant is proposing to use the RDC 12 zoning, which is rooted on this property, to repurpose that for multifamily. They're eliminating the minimum lot size provision, they're adding additional buffering, and they're also dealing with reducing some of the setbacks. The site plan that's been proposed by the applicant does not propose any concerns of the staff. You would essentially otherwise be recommending approval of it in an implementation context if not for the fact that the flex provision is not allowed to be applied in a rezoning context in this area of the county because of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. Having said that, I'll defer to the planning commission. They can walk you through the flex provision and the changes to that, but staff is not supporting the rezoning because the rezoning is not consistent for implementation due to the elimination of flex provision, which was in place at the time when the original zoning was approved. So now this is a repurposing of that, a change of use to some degree, and staff is not supporting it for the reasons that I just noted.
Applicant for oral argument. Good morning.
Is that PowerPoint up for you, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners?
Not yet. It is now.
Great, thank you. Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, we're very happy to be here this morning. I'm here with Mr. and Mrs. Richard Gonzalez, along with their, along with Bridget's father, Leroy. This is a smaller site, it's a small residential site. There's no manure control plan here, just little townhome units. RZ 181153. I think Joe introduced you to the request pretty well. We're located in the eastern part of the county and this is the parcel here, as noted by the property praiser, this is South Parsons and State Route 60 is just a few blocks, few lots to the south. As Joe said, the zoning department from the report notes the applicant's requesting rezon from RDC 12 units per acre. The applicant's requesting the following, permit construction of 12 residential units. So this is very important. This is a very unique kind of slippery, kind of weird thing where what they're requesting is basically what they're allowed now, 12 units. And I know that sounds strange. Their current entitlement from 2006 was successfully zoned for RDC. That means for duplexes, so the site would be set up in separate lots. And quite frankly, back then it would have been allowed 20 units, but they only did 12. The difference today is that we're seeking just to do one lot, really the same thing. I'll show you that on a plan. So again, seeking multifamily development at RES9 with the flex. And Joe indicated what became a difficulty, I would call bureaucracy, I don't mean that negatively, it was a bureaucratic thing that hit them this time, was the flex was not available as it was before. But again, I think it's important that this is still a 40% reduction from 2006. That means what would be allowed in 2006? That means 40% less trips, 40% less water, 40% less units. So this is the PD plan. The residential units are individual here. You'll see they're numbered 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, all the way up to 12. This is pretty much the plan as it was and the plan now. The only difference is that there would not be separate units, it would all be one lot, there would not be separate lots, there would just be one big lot for the whole property. We worked very closely with your staff. We had a lot of work to do with transportation. We had to change the plan around substantially, but we're able, we were able to move forward with transportation. They're in support or they're not in opposition. The issue had to do with driveway placements, which is always an issue, but again, we worked very diligently with the, diligently to work them, work through them. Again, Development Services staff finds the proposed rezoning is compatible with the development pattern in the area. And this is the area, it does fit in very nicely. These are either single homes or townhomes or duplexes. To the rear, the property is located here, to the rear is commercial, but throughout the whole area, what's proposed is exactly the type of residential homes. I, and here's more, this is across the street, but again, very similar to what's proposed. We did receive a call from one property owner abutting to us. We worked with him to provide additional buffering and screening and they were, that gentleman was then very happy with it. In fact, coincidentally called me yesterday wondering what was going on, so I did speak with him again. So Richard made a very clear, wanted to work with any neighbors who had concerns, which we did and we were able to work out the issue. So we're providing substantial buffers, 20-foot buffer type B on this side, 10-foot type B here. There's a huge area, which is the retention, the rear, which provides 57 feet of buffering to the rear. We're also providing a 6-foot high PVC fence, so a lot of this is above and beyond what's required by zoning. And this is just indicating 10-foot high canopy trees, which was in addition, and again, fencing and the buffering. So in summary, we consider it a down zoning to what would have been allowed in the past. That's reduction of infrastructure. We work with the staff on the single driveway element. Zoning staff does say it's compatible. And the critical factor again is the change of the requirement of individual lots for each unit versus one whole lot. So with that, we appreciate your consideration and happy answer to questions that I, I think Richard wanted to make a few comments if he may, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Todd Pressman, 200 Second Avenue South, St. Christopher Florida 32, Unit 3203.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Gonzalez, 210 Arbor Shade Court, Brandon, Florida, 33511. Thank you for your consideration for this. I think what happened, we purchased this property in 2005. We wanted to do the right thing. We had duplexes actually abutting two sides of this property. So we went and talked to Mr. John in the zoning department and he actually led us by hand and we rezoned it ourselves, myself and my wife. I think the only, I don't think there was a PD recognized back then. I think that's the only thing that's coming under, you know. We submitted this back in September and we've been working with the staff. They've bent over backwards to help us out. The only objection they had, like Todd said, is we had a driveway at each side of the property for an entrance and an exit, which we liked, but it was too close to the neighbors' driveways. So staff took us and, you know, we, they made an objection, I mean, a consideration for that. And what we did is we agreed to a 50-foot wide radius in the front so we could have a single larger driveway. But just to, just to give you a rough idea, with the, with the, I think what it comes up to.
Did you accidentally? Sorry.
What it basically comes up to is when you look at the findings of fact from the land use hearing master, which recommended denial, I think the only reason she did is because of the Sefner Mango Community Plan, which was adopted in 2010. Now remember, we got this rezoned in 2006, so her number three finding of fact is the subject property, pull it up a little bit, yeah, the subject property was previously rezoned by the current property owner in 2006 to RDC 12 for the purpose of developing 20 duplex dwelling units, which now we would like to consider 12. That's the 40% reduction. As the property is designated RES4 by the comprehensive plan, both in 2006 and currently, a flex of the RES9 future land use category was requested in 2006 and approved to achieve the requested 20 dwelling units. So what I guess a commission is put in place for is to kind of juggle what's right and what's not right. I feel that we did our due diligence in 2006, my finding. I hope you guys find it the same way. I just, I, I kind of feel it's only because that was instituted in 2010 because of the flex, but I feel like we got the flex in 2006. You know, that's, that's my, you know, I think it's one of those things that kind of fell through the cracks because we didn't have an attorney with the rezoning. It was just she and I. And we really would value your consideration to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I would just close by saying that your staff always does a great job, both the zoning staff and the planning commission. And I would say in this one circumstance, this is a very unusual, I would suggest, a singular type of, again, using the word bureaucratic element, I don't mean that negatively, and that in that case it is warranted. We understood, as Richard said, we worked, staff worked bending over backwards, really even the planning commission bending over backwards to work with them. In fact, they were under approval until about a week prior to coming to the zoning hearing master. So with that, we appreciate your consideration and we appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I have no party of records for proponents or opponents, so you waive your time for rebuttal. So I'm going to call on the planning commission staff.
Thank you. Melissa Leinhart, planning commission staff. The subject property is located within the residential for future land use category. It is also in the urban service area and the limits of the Sefner Mango Community Plan. Mr. Moretta was correct in that a previous flex on the subject site was approved in 2006 as part of the rezoning application 06-0302. At that time, the Sefner Mango Community Plan was not in existence as it wasn't adopted until 2010. Due to the new request, planning commission staff has reviewed the request under the currently adopted comprehensive plan. Within the boundary of the Sefner Mango Community Plan, flexing the land use categories is prohibited explicitly. As such, the project density cannot exceed the residential for allowable density, which is six total dwelling units. And based upon that language in the Sefner Community Plan, planning commission staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners not approve the flex request and finds the rezoning request inconsistent with the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning hearing master.
The zoning hearing master considered the request to rezone 1.69 acres from RDC 12 to planned development for the purpose of developing 12 duplex dwelling units. A flex of the residential nine future land use category is requested to achieve the 12 dwelling units. The zoning hearing master noted that the subject property was previously rezoned by the current property owner in 2006 to RDC 12 for the purpose of developing 20 duplex dwelling units. As the property is designated RES4 by the comprehensive plan, both in 2006 and currently, flex of the RES9, RES9 future land use category was requested back in 2006 and was approved at that time to achieve the requested 20 dwelling units. The property is located in the Sefner Mango Community Plan and that plan was approved in 2010. The community plan does not permit a flex of any future land use category. And for that reason, as you just heard, the planning commission found the request inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The Development Services Department has also reviewed the request and per the zoning hearing master, based on the flex provision, found that the request was not supportable. However, there is a finding in the zoning hearing master report that is noted, that there is finding of compatibility of the proposed request with the surrounding area. To summarize, the zoning hearing master's recommendation was that the request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and the Sefner Mango Community Plan.
Now moving to board discussion. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think you all know that I'm incredibly protective of these community plans, but at the same time, we have to apply common sense when we're looking at these matters. I believe that the reason for the recommendation for denial is hyper-technical and I see no overarching concerns on staff's part here. In fact, they're giving us more specificity by rezoning to a PD with entitlements that they essentially already have. And the fact that you don't see a room full of activists from the Sefner Mango Community speaks volumes. So for those reasons, I'm going to move approval of the item.
There's a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. My concern is, you know, not, I agree with you that the project is very much the same as, as what was approved in the past, but I'm, I'm very concerned about the process. I think the process that is, should be followed here would be to seek a comprehensive plan amendment to go from RES4 to RES9 or something first, to change the comprehensive plan the correct way, the procedural way. So then they wouldn't need the flex and then they could, you know, come in with a rezoning. That, you know, I wonder if they, well, anyway, it seemed, that, that should be the proper way. And I worry that if we disregard process and start using, what I agree feels very much like common sense, that, that that can be a slippery slope into overriding community plans, overriding comprehensive plan can kind of set a precedent for getting loosey-goosey with our comprehensive plan, our, our community plan process. The real process is amending the underlying comprehensive plan first. So I just, I won't be supporting the motion on those grounds. So, so I just, I won't be supporting the motion on those grounds because I'm just very concerned about that. But if the board does approve it, it's my understanding that it would, it could use some conditions from staff that were not included because staff's position was not supporting it. So there, there might be some conditions that should be added if, if the board does make this motion.
I believe there, there are now conditions that have been submitted, and staff can speak to those conditions.
Thank you.
And to that point, we do have Brian Grady submitting some conditions into the record. These are conditions that are reflective of the site plan that was submitted and reviewed, and basically is a textual version of, of the detail that's submitted on the site plan. We have shown this to the applicant, and I believe he's in agreement. I think the one change from the written version that's submitted is that the project wouldn't be subject to the minimum lot sizes of the RDC 12 zoning district, which is what was driving him for this PD application in the first place.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate Commissioner White in your motion and the flexibility in your concern, which is almost the concern here, is the flexibility. And I'll just say to the new members, that's why we sit here as the board, is to make these tough decisions, and sometimes what's in the best interest of the applicant and really the community. But I, I mean, I saw three main themes here: compatibility, it is compatible with the neighborhood. I thought that was extremely critical. The common sense factor and the configuration is less than what they passed in 2006. So I really have no problem supporting this moving forward because I just, I think it just, it's part of what the neighborhood is. And the fact that, I think the big thing was, the residents from the Sefner Mango area are not here. And they are here when they have concerns. I'll just let you all know, they're big here, they're here big time. So I just, I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I appreciate this discussion and the points brought up by Commissioners White, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Merman. And, and I, I will say, I'm going to support this, but I, and I understand the phrase "hyper-technical," but I'm not sure that that really describes it as much as I, I felt with Commissioner Smith, that, I just want to make clear that I think when it comes to our offices, I guess, or when it comes up, that maybe the proper thing would be to be directing people to go back for a comprehensive plan amendment, which I would be very accepting of, and again, would be the appropriate process. I was just kind of wondering as we were sitting here, and you articulated it, Commissioner Smith, why, like, that wasn't, the posture that it was brought to us in, I'm not sure. But I'd just like to say, I, even though it's, it is common sense, and I would like to see, I think duplexes, I've, I've been a fan of duplexes for a while, and thinking that they were good housing options, and seems like it's compatible with the community, and yes, there aren't anyone in Sefner, and I don't think anyone on this board, as Commissioner Smith said, is objecting, you know, in, in what it is. But I am concerned that we don't bring things forward in this posture because it can lead to this slippery slope of having that happen. So, and those flexes are famous, I think, for, for that kind of thing. So I'm, I'm glad that the community plan is part of this. I don't want to send the message back either to the zoning Hearing Master or Development Services or the planning commission that, that I'm not pleased that they came with these recommendations. In terms of this process, I'm glad to understand all of this. So I will support it, but I just wanted to voice those concerns.
Before we get into the second round of questioning, let me, let me get some clarification. The applicant walked through a rezoning in 2006, am I correct? When was the comprehensive plan adopted?
Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff, 2010 was when the Sefner Mango Community Plan, which is part of the livable communities element, that's when that was adopted. So the 2006, the flex was considered because the Sefner Mango Plan was not in existence.
Okay. So when the plan, the Sefner Mango Plan came into existence, there was no way that this could be grandfathered?
Well, from my understanding and talking with Development Services staff and the county attorney's office, the, if they were to develop under their existing entitlements, their existing entitlements, but because they're asking for a new request, we are obligated to look at what's adopted currently.
Commissioner White, you're recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a procedural issue, I'd like to withdraw my motion and restate it to be to approve the item with the conditions that were submitted.
Okay. Commissioner White's withdrawn his motion and added a new motion with conditions. Commissioner Merman seconds that motion. Commissioner Obermann, you're recognized.
I'd, I'd like to echo Commissioner Smith's comments. You know, the, the challenge we have is when we have a, a community plan that might not be in line with our comprehensive plan. And if, if there are some inconsistencies there, then I believe that it's the comp plan amendment process that we address those issues. The fact that our comprehensive plan is looking to increase density within the urban service area, but the community plan prohibits that, seems, or at least appears to prohibit that with, with the change, it does appear to be inconsistent at this point. This looks like a great project that would be approved in the urban service area to me. When I first looked at it, I was like, this makes common sense. But apparently, there's some inconsistencies that have not been addressed at the comprehensive plan level that should have before we gotten here. So I do echo your point. I do believe that this looks like a great project. It doesn't seem to be inconsistent with the area. But it, it does seem as though we, you know, for someone that's new who's trying to figure this out, it does seem as though we're doing this a little backwards. So I, I will support the effort.
There's no further discussion. A motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item G1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to item G2, rezoning 19-0205. Oral argument has been filed for this application.
Have a motion open for oral argument. Motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote. Please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Landry, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Landry.
There, there was a request for additional evidence filed on behalf of the, of the applicant. That request was reviewed and was found to not meet the standard for the admission of additional evidence, and that was communicated to the applicant who has requested the additional evidence request. So I wanted to ask that the board proceed to take a motion and deny that request.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White to deny the request for additional evidence. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Mr. Merman.
Commissioners, I would note that I've been advised that the applicant is not here.
The applicant is not here?
Not that we're aware of. I was just advised of that.
Okay, then we're going to, yeah, we're going to continue. Commissioner Merman moves to continue. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner White and to Mr. Obermann to continue item G2. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
That will be the May 7th Board of County Commissioners meeting at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, we finish the vote first and then you make your announcement?
Motion carried six, motion carried six to zero.
Now, what were you saying?
Just to clarify the date and time for the continuance, May 7th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. White.
You know, I, I wonder if the applicant's not here because they were discouraged over the recommendation for denial. I guess I'm, I guess it's legally okay for me to state for the, for the record that I was inclined to make a motion for approval of this based on a number of factors. So in anticipation of that, just in case the votes are there, you can work with the applicant on potential conditions and/or restrictions before the next meeting. That would be great.
Yeah, I did actually speak with the applicant, so I assume that they were, they were coming. They, they seemed to indicate that they were, so not sure what occurred.
Mr. Chairman, do I still have the floor?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what you just said.
Well, sometimes we approve items subject to conditions. There's also a potential to rezone it as a restricted rezoning, so I just want staff to work on potential conditions and/or restrictions, much like the last item. Sometimes, you know, staff will have those, those ready and anticipation.
Why don't we get, why don't we get to that when the applicant shows up? The applicant's not here today, so it's no need for us to do that, right, except at this point in time. Next month, when the applicant, if the applicant shows up, then we can talk about those conditions at that point.
I know sometimes staff likes to work on them ahead of time because it can end up being a lengthy list of conditions and takes some work to prepare. I'm just trying to make staff's life, you know, a little easier.
We'll certainly coordinate with the applicant in advance, make sure that they, they're aware of the May meeting, and entertain any restriction requests they may have proposed. What they're actually proposing here is a standard zoning district, so it is not required to have conditions or restrictions to it, but we'll have the conversation with the applicant.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Merman.
Yes, sir. Ready the next item. That brings us to H1A and H1B. H1A is rezoning PD 19-0067. H1B is a related item, which is a DRI change, 18-1343. This project is generally located south of 19th, north of College, and west of I-75. Ms. Michelle Heinrich of our staff will make a brief presentation to provide an overview on both of these items.
Good morning, Michelle Heinrich, Development Services. This morning, we're going to outline for you the proposed changes to the South Shore Corporate Park DRI Development of Regional Impact in the PD, which are the related items that Mr. Moretta spoke to. The South Shore Corporate Park project is a two-phase project covering approximately 984 acres. Phase one is approved for a specific number of units and square footage with a specific build-out date, while phase two is conceptually approved with also a specific number of units, square footage, and its own build-out date. The South Shore PD was originally approved in 2001 under PD 011160. A new PD is required due to acreage being added, and a majority of the other modifications in that PD are concurrently being proposed under the DRI amendment. The PD contains many of the same items found in the DRI, excluding specifics related only to a development of regional impact. Some of the common requests found in both that I'll outline for you is firstly adding in 80, 0.83 acres into the PD and DRI. This area is located at the southeast corner of 24th Street and 19th Avenue. Modifying the phase two entitlements, and it is reducing the light industrial and research corporate park square footage, increasing the commercial general square footage, increasing the commercial neighborhood and office square footage, and reducing the number of residential units, with phase one containing 1,141 and phase two containing 500 units. Also, found in both modifications, this will allow a development option on certain areas of the PD. Those areas are delineated on page eight of the DRI staff report or in exhibit four of the PD staff report. And we would note that any residential to develop and tracks I, J, and H, and that is the area west of 30th between 19th Avenue and Shell Point, must be multifamily, and it must provide a minimum 15% of workforce housing, and the development is to provide a grid street network to promote connectivity. Also, found in both is the relocation of the county park from the area north of Thompson Elementary to an area south of the TECO power line, power line right-of-way, and that area can be found on page nine of the DRI staff report or exhibit eight of the PD. And we will note that the new proposed location is adjacent to the county's trail system. Some DRI-specific changes, just to bring to your attention, includes extending the build-out dates and the development order's extension or expiration date, and that's as permitted in Florida statutes and recognized under the executive orders of the governor. Also, to recognize phase two entitlements is no longer conceptual, those will be now specifically approved. Removing 18.7 acres out of the DRI, those specific locations can be found on page six of the DRI staff report. Also, to modify the transportation mitigation options for phase one, which is being recognized as completed, and for phase two, recognizing that they will be subject to the mobility fee ordinance. Also, we've made changes to the DIO language to adjust changes in the DRI statutes and requirements, which have been significant since this was originally approved. And lastly, to adopt a second land use equivalency matrix to be used for phase two conversions, and that can be found on page 43 of the DRI staff report. I'm available if you have any questions, and I believe also the applicant will be speaking.
Thank you. The applicant here? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrea Zelman, Buchanan Ingersoll Rooney, 401 East Jackson Street, Suite 2400. And I have with me today our client, John Tipton, representing the master developer, Artesian Farms and Dickman Investments, and also Adam Carnegie from Stan Tech. I want to thank, first of all, the staff. This has been a long-involved process, and they've worked hard with us on these conditions. It wasn't always fun, but I think we got to a good point today. And I also want to thank Michelle for, I believe, very well outlining the changes that are being made today, both in her staff reports and just now. I have four pages of talking points, and she took most of them away from me, which you're probably relieved to hear. So I'll just, I'll focus on the highlights, and then we're happy to answer any questions. This is an older DRI. It was first approved in 2007. In fact, I was reminiscing with James Ratliff. I first met his mother, George Ann Ratliff, working with, with her on this and with Ria Loth, from whom we've now taken the reins. And like many DRIs that were approved a long time ago, a lot of changes happened, a lot of parcels have been sold. On the west side, there's a branch campus of Hillsborough Community College, there's a Centex Residential Development, there is a high school and an elementary school, Leonard and Thompson. And of course, as you're probably well aware, there's a large Amazon Distribution Center that was built on the east side of the property closer to I-75. And as Michelle noted, these changes that we're making now are primarily being made because our client is seeking approval for the second phase of the DRI. Like many older DRIs, this had two phases. And like many older DRIs, this one was optimistically overentitled, so some of the changes that we're making today are to kind of bring it back to reality. We're also doing a lot of, a lot of cleanup work. So just to touch on the highlights, we're reducing the overall residential entitlements by 1,225 units. We're reducing the light industrial and research corporate park entitlements from 5,563, 5,563,525 square feet to 3,742,220 square feet. But I would ask you to note that there are still over 176 acres of land that is undeveloped but platted and remains zoned for light industrial research corporate park, and there's over 2 million square feet of those entitlements remaining to be developed. We're not taking those away. As Michelle mentioned, we're asking that a park be moved so that it will be in a more convenient site. It will actually be closer to the proposed Greenway Trail. And then we're doing some other cleanup work that Michelle mentioned. And I would note again, as she mentioned, we did ask that two parcels located between 30th Street and the creek be changed to allow, in addition to the light industrial and research corporate park residential. And originally, your staff objected to that. We believe that that is consistent with the comprehensive plan policy of encouraging the inclusion of housing within mixed-use projects. But in any event, the... And again, we're not taking away the ability to also, to instead develop research corporate park light industrial. We feel that because of the location of those parcels, they're less likely to be appealing to that type of developer, but we're not taking away the possibility of that happening. So again, the condition would allow residential, but not, that also may not necessarily happen. It's, we just now allow the three different types of uses there. One final housekeeping matter to bring to your attention is due to a, a small error on our part when we updated the site plan to reconfigure what used to be called Parcel G into three sub-parcels. We inadvertently changed the allowable uses for one of those parcels, Parcel G2, which used to be allowed to develop uses in the M Manufacturing zoning district. We inadvertently removed that, so we're asking that that be put back on. Your staff has agreed. They have no objection to that. So we've brought with us a revised site plan that would correct that, and we would also modify zoning condition 1.2 to, again, keep that condition back to the way it was, which would have allowed M District uses and research corporate park uses. Again, as Michelle mentioned, there's other DRI housekeeping items, recognizing previous extensions of time, previously approved land use equivalency matrix exchanges, eliminating things that are no longer required by the DRI statute, such as annual reporting and language about air quality and affordable housing, although again, we do have a PD zoning condition regarding affordable housing. So in sum, I think, again, Michelle, her staff report gives you a very exhaustive description of all these changes. And as you know, the zoning hearing master recommended approval of the zoning changes, and your staff and the planning commission staff have both found both the PD changes and the DRI changes consistent with the LDC and with the comprehensive plan, and they've recommended approval with these conditions, and we simply request that you do the same today. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to address item H1A or H1B? Anyone? Seeing none. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will move approval of this project. I just want to make a couple of comments.
Can we get a second to the motion? No, go ahead.
Can I go now?
You can go now.
Thank you. Okay. I, I, you know, since I've been Commissioner since 2010, I have watched the area of South Shore, especially this area Corporate Park and Amazon, develop to a great degree. Schools have gone up, tons of new housing developments, as Commissioner Smith and I both know, and there's been tremendous growth. But this will definitely, this whole area around South Shore Corporate Park is really developing, as we used, called it in our workshops before the new Commissioners came on board, as a node of development, where there's live work play, transportation is being developed. And, you know, I think it's, this is a great project, and with 15% going to workforce housing, I think is really commendable to the applicant to make sure that that's available because Hillsborough Community College is right there. They can work at Amazon while they're going to school. If they don't do that, and they're just working, the heart does go to Amazon now, so there is transportation. So I feel really good about that and the proximity to the trail, and actually, the future, when Waterset Sports Complex does open, it will be close to that also. So I think this is a really good live work play project, and I, I just, I didn't see really anything bad in it, except, you know, it does add to the traffic a little bit. 19th Avenue is in good shape, but I think that there's, you know, we're looking at future expansion of that, doing the PD and E right now, and I think that that is very good. And then also that they're contributing to school capacity at Thompson Middle School, which I thought was really good, that they're, because of the high growth in the area, they're going to be dedicating a two-acre parcel to allow Thompson to expand. So I think these are all, they're working with the community. John Tipton is somebody that knows this community extremely well, and he, they would not bring a project here if it wasn't worthy and good for the community, and that's why I'm heavily supporting this project. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with everything you said, I think. The, the community's been very excited about this huge DRI for a long time. I'm especially excited to see the moving of the little park where it can really provide a trailhead to the South Coast Greenway Trail and, and the connections with other, other bike trails to that. But I have, I do have a, a large concern in one aspect of the way this is changing the, the plan. My concern is over the conversion of economic land, the research corporate park area, to housing. And I have voiced those concerns over other projects in South County time and time again as we've, the county has allowed bites or nibbles to be taken out of these large areas that were specifically preserved for research corporate park. You need big pieces of land to do this kind of research corporate park and light industrial. So you start nibbling away and allowing, it was a Publix in one case, it's usually housing and convert the jobs to housing, and it's, you end up with something that's no longer viable for those good jobs that come with the research corporate park and light industrial. You, you may end up with some more strip plaza retail uses still left in the project, but, but my concern is the conversion, and, and in this case, it's quite a bit. We start with almost 3 million square feet of research corporate park and light industrial, and it subtracts 2 million, almost 2 million of that. So then it adds back a little bit of the commercial, but you end up with much less than half, a little more than a third of what you started with for jobs, and you replace that with housing. Now, we're all excited to be having a developer agree to workforce housing, but when I really look at what that is practically in this case, because they've reduced the residential in the, is my, my calculations, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like it's the place where they've reduced the residential to 500 units that are, is now saying, okay, we'll do 15% of those workforce housing. So that, if, if you do the max of 500, the maximum you would get would be 75 apartments that are workforce housing. And remember, this is not affordable housing for the lowest income. This is workforce housing for, at 120% of AMI. And, and so what we get in this deal is up to 75 units that are for people making in today's dollars maybe 77,000 a year. According to the state, with that income of 76,680, a family could afford to pay 1,746 dollars a month in rent for a two-bedroom apartment. 1,746 dollars a month. The median rental prices in Hillsborough County are 1,040 dollars a month. So we're gaining the promise to do 76 units at quite a bit more than the median rental for, for Hillsborough County. And keep in mind, these are apartments in an industrial or commercial complex right near the interstate in Ruskin. So if, I know that our Economic Development Department raised these concerns and then was, decided to not object at the end because of this deal. So if I could ask for staff to address that and, and, and ask what it is that I'm missing. I'm not seeing a, a great deal here for the county, and I'm wondering whether it's worth remanding for a more detailed look at exactly what the market rate for rental here is, what we're really gaining as we give up almost 2 million square feet of research corporate park here. You know, my, my worry is that we are, we keep doing this, and we turn South County more and more into a big bedroom community full of commuters as we convert the good jobs to houses.
Ms. Barton, you recognize? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator, Economic Prosperity. Thank you for your question. For the older Commissioners that have been here, this is usually when I come visit, is this discussion related to land use and jobs. And we've had some pretty spirited conversations in the past, so I welcome the conversation again. It's kind of our job to stand on the wall and say, we object. In fact, we've made it just our policy, rather than to second-guess ourselves. When we have these circumstances, we immediately let the applicant know we have a concern. What that does frankly is allows us to engage in a more meaningful conversation with the applicant than just trading paperwork. And so you're right, we originally submitted a memo saying that we objected to the request, and it allowed us to kind of go into, along with Development Services staff, a conversation with the applicant about the journey that they've been on related to development. Every one of these are different. So when I visited with this board, it was probably about 10 months ago, it was, it was a DRI in which, as I said on the public record, the cow was out of the barn. We were down to like the last, I'm going to round it, we were down to about the last 25 acres of commercial office development of a very large DRI. So even the board at that time, if you recall, acknowledged the deed had been done. So we want to understand the circumstances, and this is the, this is the push and pull between the long-range land use objectives of our community, but the private property rights, opportunities of developers and landowners to try and move their property forward, and that's a hard balance. It's what you deal with every day in this form. So we went down that conversation with them. To be quick about why did we alter it, two things. One, there's a substantial amount of land still available east of 21st, 30th, thank you for the reminder, east of that road, that's very significant. In fact, the applicant at one time had approached us informally about changes that would look at multifamily on that eastern portion. We objected at that time, and they listened to us. And in fact, I think that's what led them to the proposal that they came to now. So number one, significant amount. Don't always look at entitlements. Even the applicant said, and I've actually master-planned DRIs myself on behalf of governmental entities, they're almost invariably overentitled anyway. So the entitlements versus the amount of land available to develop, you just have to look at both. Sometimes you have way too much entitlements to what land is left anyway. So we felt there was significant land available that could still approach the issue of job creation for the community. The second is the land that they're proposing to add the residential option to was on the western side, and those sites are smaller, they're more constrained. So yes, you could develop them for job creation, but the site, site configurations are very constrained. So that was a mitigating circumstance for us as well. The, the other is that in their initial application, they just said residential. And so when we started to think about it and said, well, there is a transition between uses, and multifamily is a good transitional use to something like an Amazon across the street, we felt that if we could introduce the concept of affordable housing or workforce housing into the equation, that was a win for us, because we do need that mitigated circumstance in the housing. So those were, that's the short version. There was a very involved conversation, but we felt that it was a trade-off. But we weren't significantly compromising the job creation capability of the overall DRI. I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
When I first started listening to this presentation, I was like, okay, I heard all my favorite words, grids, roads, schools. And I do understand your concern about, about converting part of this project from commercial, excuse me, to residential. But recently, we, we actually approved a project somewhat similar in line with the university project that includes living and working and investing business resources in the right direction. Sorry, taking a sip of water before you start talking is always dangerous, sorry. But I, I like what I'm seeing here. I do have concerns, and it does look like a lot of the residential area is being placed close to the wetlands in order to address the fact that many of that, much of that property couldn't take a very large commercial development. So I, I'm going to support this effort. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I have some questions. I'm not sure who is available to answer them about workforce housing. Would that be you? Yeah, I just, so is that our, is that definitionally workforce housing is 120% of AMI or 77,000 here?
I couldn't speak to the number, but yes, definitionally, that's what workforce housing limit is. And we did work with the Affordable Housing Office and Ms. Howell to, to come up with that, the language that's in your conditions right now. It's felt to be something that, that is enforceable and will, will give us the ability to ensure that that condition is met.
Is that a nationally recognized or in terms of 120%? Because to me, when you're talking 77,000 as a salary, that's, I wouldn't ever even call that workforce. I mean, 80% of AMI might be workforce housing to me, but not, not 120% of AMI.
I believe, I believe this is a nationally recognized standard, and 80% is the affordable housing limit, and 120% is workforce housing. So it's that, it's that area between the affordable and...
So I would feel way more comfortable as a condition when we talked about affordable housing, if we did something that was more 80% of AMI, whatever you call it, because to me, this is just unaffordable housing, actually, I think, for most of Hillsborough County. And I'm excited to see some options for affordable housing or for people, but it's, the, when our median income is, you know, 50,000 and it's 25 out of 25 in the country, and this would be the, I would not even call this affordable housing. It seems to me this would be unaffordable housing, but, you know, I just wanted to, I, I also like the terms grid and affordable housing as a consideration and appreciate the, the discussion, but I really think we have to start redefining what is presented as affordable housing, because I'd like to get that included, but, but I wouldn't consider this to meet any standard in my mind or as what I know of earning here, that this would be considered an affordable housing.
And just, so the board understands how that works. The 120% is based on the median income adjusted by family size for this metropolitan area. The rents are then...
affordable housing, because I'd like to get that included, but I wouldn't consider this to meet any standard in my mind or as what I know of earning here, that this would be considered an affordable housing.
And just, so the board understands how that works. The 120% is based on the median income adjusted by family size for this metropolitan area. The rents are then calibrated against that income such that no more than 30% of the, the rent and utilities would amount to no more than 30% of that average median income. So it is all keyed towards the area income, and it would differ from area to area.
Right. I was just downtown looking at our, some of the market rate housing that we had in our, at the Housing Authority, and they mix market rate housing and downtown two-bedroom apartments were, one bedroom was 950, and a two-bedroom was 1,100 downtown with a pool and a lot of amenities. And this would, you know, I don't know what this would mean in translating in terms of, well, I think you said 1,700. So that just seems, I'll just say again, that does not seem like a standard we should be using when we start to look at these conditions. I, to me, that's, that's something that really should be reworked and reconsidered if we're going to get serious about providing affordable housing opportunities in the community and making them a part of a requirement or part of a trade-off for how we do things. So I'd just like to start to be thinking about a different standard that we look at, like an 80% of AMI when we, when we do these kinds of negotiations.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you. Just quickly, I have the same concerns, Commissioner Smith, and actually, I know who owns all the property down there, and I feel extremely comfortable with the amount of land that's still available for commercial development. And also, there's that huge area north of Hillsborough Community College, which is in the South Shore Campus. So I really feel very positive about the growth in the area and the amount of, to give that live work play environment, you know, you have to have a right balance. But I think this particular property, especially multifamily, will go a long way to help in the area. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I think it is important to recognize the difference between what is typically called affordable housing and workforce housing, and I appreciate that the developer has focused on workforce housing. I would have loved to have seen more in the area of some allocation if the county had the bandwidth for allocating what was traditionally considered affordable housing, which is under, you know, under 100% or closer to 80% of AMI, which is the average median income of the people who live here. This particular area, given the research park and the corporate park and the steady jobs, is going to probably increase the number of individuals that will be eligible for the workforce limit. However, it is, it is a concern. You know, 80% of AMI is not very much money. And the county housing, affordable housing department has to have the resources and the funding through various different grants and other resources to partner with our developers for creating that 80% margin. So to have some of this allocated, I would love to see more than 15%. That's, you know, I'm on 80%, but you know, that's which, what we want and what we wish for is a whole different deal. But I do appreciate that there is some workforce allocation here. When you have a community like this that's being built in an area that's growing as rapidly as South County is, having an allocation towards workforce housing to make sure that the people who live in that community can afford to live there is critically important. The pressures that we aren't seeing now, but we will see as this area continues to grow, is going to allow that 120% to provide an opportunity for some people to continue living there that otherwise would be moved out. And moved into the rural areas that we're worried about trying to protect. So I, while I appreciate that, I would love to see if we had the bandwidth for affordable housing and projects like this as being part of the opportunity, I do appreciate that the workforce allocation has been made. But there is, this is not, this isn't affordable housing. This is workforce housing, which has a different definition. So, but thank you for the questions, because I think it helps me and everyone understand. Thanks.
We have a motion by Commissioner Murman, second by Commissioner Haggen, to approve item H1A and H1B. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Mr. Moreno? I'm sorry, Mr. Ball.
That concludes our agenda today. I'd just like to announce for the board that at the May 7th land use meeting, we will be coming back to you with both population projections, a discussion on that, and a schedule for addressing the items that were raised in the April 4th land use workshop. So we'll be bringing that back at the May land use meeting for the board's consideration. Thank you.
They're wanted together. See you in further discussion. We adjourn.